Okay, it's six o'clock. Go ahead and open the meeting. Remind everybody to turn off their cell phones. Start with a prayer and a plan. Heavenly Father, we come to you to, with heavy hearts tonight, with the victim from the fire today, be with that family and their friends. What a tragic loss. And also, I think about coming this Saturday is Veterans Day. And we're so thankful for the sacrifices the veterans made. And I encourage everybody, if you know somebody, give them a call and say, "Thank you for your service." I would just pray for unity tonight. We pray for, give us all wisdom, what needs to be decided, what's best for the community, and all these things. I pray through Christ. Amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Barr.
Eric.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Cooper.
Here.
Get before you the regular council meeting minutes on October the 16th. Have a chance to look those over. Any corrections? Make a motion for his written second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martin.
From Stane.
Beverly.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
I've had before you the bills. Any questions?
Do we get reimbursed for that demolition through the county or?
Eventually.
Corey, what, Oakemeyer designed for $2,000 for that addendum?
Just for the water tower, that was something that's fairly old from the rebid that we did on that. That was for them to change some verbiage in it and rebid that water tower project.
And Choice One Engineering, the 1350, you spoke earlier during our last meeting that they had done something for you, because we haven't seen or heard anything about that for over a year. What was this 1350 cover?
It was part of their design changing from that meeting that we had. But it's their time of being here and changing of the design.
Is that your department, you guys, that's up with, they're going back to the table with that, with your changes that you have brought up in the meeting, kind of thing, or is that?
Yeah, with the storm sewer.
Yeah, yeah. I know we're making a lot of changes and talking about different ways of doing the project, but would this be part of what you want them to change it to?
Yes.
Okay. You've already worked that out with them.
And 16-1 to call the tanks, is that the end of it for them?
No, there's 287,404 left. Profit for material, more labor, electrical, plumbing.
On the Choice One with Defiance County, are they still drawing against the contract, the design contract, or is this way?
No. Yes, this is all, I don't remember exactly how much was in, was the design engineering portion of it, I don't remember how much was there, there's quite a bit of money in there. This is all from, it purchased order from.
So they're still, so they're still drawing against that?
Yeah, this is nothing new.
Not TNM or anything?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barr.
Upstein.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Cooper.
Upstein.
Martin.
Yes.
A notice of a public hearing. The Hicksville Planning Commission will meet November the 16th at 6:00 PM. The zoning office to hear a request by NIMCO to rezone 301 Musargon from A1 agriculture, public use to B1 central business, B2 local business, and B3 general business. And that'll be November the 16th at 6:00. And the Board of Zoning Appeals met October the 18th. Minutes are in the packet. Any questions on the, of those two? Okay, next on the agenda, Erica Wiltzer from the Defiance County CIC, speaking counsel.
Okay, so you guys asked me to do, have a deep dive analysis of LeBar Drive, and that's what I have in your packet. So roughly LeBar Drive, as you guys know, is around 20 acres, and it's plotted as 52. When it comes to housing, it's all about maximizing, especially because it's just, with housing additions, it's costly and you want to try to get as much as you can. I saw the wooded area, that's still village-owned, and I thought, well, there might be a way that we could also utilize that. So I did input in our software 56 units. With recent expansions in Hicksville, NIMCO, APT Manufacturing, and then we also have just overall in Defiance County, several new projects that haven't been announced yet, or and/or existing projects, we're projecting 400 to 600 new positions in the next three years. And I really believe strongly that Hicksville is positioned to really take on some of that housing for the people that we recruit in. I don't know if you guys have noticed how Leo Cedarville's really boomed. I think you guys could be the next Leo Cedarville of Defiance County of Ohio, so, but how do we get there? So I wanted to let you know as far as like, what I put into this software was, and we can change this, so like if you're like, Erica, I want you to kind of input some of this data to see, like if you run into a developer that wants to do XYZ, I can put that into the software and it'll put out some output that I can share with everybody. But just for this, with not having anything, 2,000 square feet home, market value of 250,000, and knowing going in the national average for profit per housing for a developer is 25,000 to 50,000. A lot of times, and most of the time, the reason that housing developments are not happening is because there's a lot of upfront investment, as you guys all know, high risk and slow rate of return. So the infrastructure, typically when you're looking at infrastructure, even electric or water and sewer, you're about a million a mile. That ground, I measured it, I didn't physically go out and measure it, I would use the auditor's website, it's like a half of a, half of a mile. But then taking into consideration the gas line, which needs expanded, fiber needs expanded, I would say that you're, just a best guess ballpark, I would say you're at about a million in infrastructure. When I say you, that's not necessarily you, I'm just talking in general. So some of the economic indicators by impact, if, let's say we were to get a 56-unit development new neighborhood, you're looking at an impact of around 295 jobs. That's construction jobs, that's offshoot, that is residents moving in there and getting jobs here in the Hicksville area. And then just so you know, when I did the input, I made sure that I put in Hicksville's zip code. I didn't do any expanding beyond that, which I could do in the future if you guys wanted me to do that. So when you're doing these analyses, they're always looking at direct impact, indirect impact, and induced impact. Direct impact is the construction. Indirect impact is the indirect off of the actual construction. So real estate services, attorney fees that are associated with that construction. And then induced impact is what you would get if they were going to go and go out to eat at the restaurants. So to the next page where it says Hicksville's annual impact after development, which is the tax results. Keep in mind, there's pages and pages that I got when I did this analysis, but I'm breaking it down to the, like the ones, the chunks that I think are the best nuggets of information. The tax implications are for Hicksville, 226,000 annually, if you were to get a new 56-unit housing addition. So that is direct, indirect, and induced. The county would benefit 84,000 with real property taxes. And then the value added, I put this in here because I just thought it was, was pretty cool. So if you add a 56-unit neighborhood, you're looking at full-service restaurants benefiting $191,000 a year. When you're talking limited-service restaurants, those are not open all the time, maybe coffee shops, all of those combined, you are looking at a total of 260,000. I can look into any type of industry. I think they even had car washes in there. But it's, yeah, it kind of goes very granular to that level. So when it comes to houses, it is, it doesn't model out, it's very risky for a housing developer to take something like this on. So they're going to need assistance. I've done a lot of research with communities that are thriving and then communities that are not. And the communities that are really starting to see momentum are the ones that are using the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing. And if you're not familiar with a TIF, it is where someone takes out the money, a bond financing, and then they get paid back by redirecting the property taxes back to them. So there's, there's two kinds, there's actually multiple kinds of TIFs. But for what would be useful in this situation, there's a developer-funded TIF, where you would have a developer fund all the infrastructure, but then on the backend, after the housing development, or even if it's midway, gets built, we would have the auditor redirect the taxes back to that developer. So that's one way. And that helps offset the costs that they up fronted for all the infrastructure, so that million. So then there's also a government-funded TIF, where the municipality can actually take out a bond to pay for all the infrastructure, and then they get paid back on the backend. So I did some calculations on the TIF payback. So this is, this varies on what percentage of a tax abatement you would do. It would, it'd be pending a school approval, that would be Hicksville and four county career center, and you would definitely, if this is something that you guys are going to move forward on, want to talk to the school district before going forward in this fashion. But, so just estimates, if you did a 90% tax abatement redirected after the neighborhood is fully developed, built, you're looking at around $208,000 annually being redirected. 80% tax abatement, 185,000, and then 75% is 173,000 to get that paid, paid back. And what we would do is we would put together an agreement, and it would, I would not put this together, we would have an attorney that would do this, because I'm working on another one in another community, and the developer, it was, it's a developer-funded TIF. And he was asking, "Okay, well, you know, can I just keep drawing on that TIF even though like I, I got all my infrastructure paid back?" No, that's not how it works. We would have all of that laid out in great detail in the agreement. So projected cost, profit for the developer, so to develop a 56 housing, 56 units for a housing development addition, you're looking at nine to 11 million dollars. With infrastructure, a million. And the potential profit for a developer, again, like I said earlier, is anywhere from 25,000 to 50,000 per home. But you're looking anywhere from 1.4 million to 2.8 million. I mean, that's a good, it's a good profit, but again, that risk is so high upfront. That's why incentives are going to be critical. So overall, when I, when you, when we went through all of this, just to kind of recap, you're looking at 226,000 per year. That is overall, direct for Hicksville, if you got that whole entire housing addition built, you're looking at 65,000. That's going to be going back to you in taxes. That is after the whole TIF. I think what you have to really look at when, when investing in something like this is, is the induced part of it. What I found really, I don't know, I guess, there's a lot of little granular things, like if you added 56 homes to Hicksville, the, the software actually calculates that you're going to get around $117,000 donated to your local churches from those residents coming in. So there's a lot of those offshoots that you really can't calculate in tax form, but it's, it's helping your community grow. And so I mean, what, so what do you do next? So I put next steps, and this is where I'll lean on you guys for guidance. You need to decide on land cost. For the sake of this analysis, I did plug in $3,500 per acre. But having reviewed, you know, the way the model looks to entice a developer, I think that's something that should be discussed. I would even say like, if they give you a certain amount of a commitment, maybe you look at doing the land acquisition at very low cost or no cost. We talked about this too. Do some requests for proposals, where we put together a package. We have an attorney that can put that together. I had asked, you guys had asked me to ask Mark Warnke if he'd be interested in doing that. He said that he would be. He has experience in doing those kinds of things. That way we know that we're going to have some developers that are going to come back and, and put some offers on the table. And even if, let's say we, we put something out and we don't get it, we just keep trying because eventually we're going to get some developers. Decision on how to handle the TIF, like if you want to do it where the, the village does that, or if you want to do it where we try to have the developer do it. My recommend, my recommendation would to, would be to have the developer do it. Because that's going to be an incentive for them to, not, it's like a double incentive. It's an incentive for them to get that money redirected, but it's also an incentive on them to actually do it in a fairly quickly time span, because it typically takes two years to get on the tax rolls. So then get that housing addition built, then they're going to get redirected faster. If that's on the municipality's dime, we could put that in the agreement, of course. But again, you guys are going to have ongoing maintenance, and that's something to look at too. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, I think that if you guys are serious about this, we need to do, you know, a marketing campaign with the request for proposals, and then we need to even look beyond LeBar Drive, and, and look at other areas where we can market, because we can use the same tool there too. So I know I threw a lot out at you. Do you guys have any questions? Did I bore you guys?
No, no, no. They're interrupting.
Okay.
Appreciate you taking the time to do this.
Yeah. I think overall, if, yes, it's, it's a lot of money to do a housing addition, but I do believe that it, that on the backend, if the developer is a go-getter, is able to do it relatively quickly, still maintain high quality, there is a reward there. I do think that the municipality, Village of Hicksville, it does have to work on figuring out how we're going to incentivize, because that's, I think that's the only way, that's the only way the other communities are doing it, that are really succeeding at the housing part of it. And we have, we're sitting in a really good situation because we have a lot of growth with companies, and they are needing the houses.
You said you've worked with other communities for these type of projects, I mean, with developers?
With TIFs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes, and then also there's, we're working with some developers now. In addition to that, there's been other TIF districts in Defiance that, like, not knowing anything about TIF districts, I was kind of thrown into, and how to file them, and how to file them correctly, so. But I, I will tell you, I lean heavily on attorneys, making sure that I am filing everything correctly, we're doing, like, with the agreements, we would definitely want an attorney to make sure we have everything laid out correctly, so that there's nothing that, I've seen other communities, not necessarily on houses, but using the TIF, and they try to do it themselves, they've never done it before, and then it, it just doesn't end up right. So I would say that we want to make sure that you have a good attorney that can review all that, make sure that we've got it, we've got the agreement locked in very good, so down the road, Hicksville is taken care of, and so are the residents.
I have a question. Development costs, nine to 11 million? What's that entail, development costs? I see infrastructure one.
So that's like the houses, like, sort of labor.
Okay. Basically to have a fully, a full development, so there you have 56 houses. Everything went along with building these houses.
Okay. In your travels and getting together with the different ones on TIFs and with the housing contracts, I mean, in my opinion, things have kind of slowed down a little bit in the housing development.
Well, they've slowed down because of the interest rates too.
Interest in, yeah, and we won't even win politics. Have you talked to the developers that are, maybe has an eye out for something like this currently?
I am working with a couple of developers and with, in Defiance County, not specifically to LeBar Drive. I did show them LeBar Drive, but for whatever reason, they wanted to go and look in a different area. But I think that we need to have all of this in place so that it can be more enticing. Yeah.
So in the government-funded TIF, that's basically, the developer's still doing all of the legwork on the development. The village is just paying the infrastructure bill?
Yeah, and then they get paid back from the TIF over a certain period of time. And then once we got everything laid out with the agreement, like as far as like phases, so there's going to be multiple phases, and they have to hit that, that TIF, those TIF like goals, and if they don't, then they have to pay, pay that. We would put that in the agreement.
That would be, including the village would have to pay, so you could set the thing up for a 10-year payout, or five-year payout, and it takes 20 years to fill that? The village pays?
No.
No, you only pay on production.
Yeah.
So like, the TIF would only be funded out of the revenue created through the new taxes.
But if we've got the infrastructure in, and there's people who've come in and put in 10, 11 houses?
Yeah.
And everything goes sour?
Then you only get a small amount of the money back.
Yeah.
You only get a percent, that same percentage at the 10 or 11 houses that were.
Right. That's why I think that.
So it's not like you're paying on all of those houses?
So then it's not that big of a risk to us?
Correct.
It's for intensity.
And I would say, I would even take it another step further. I, I would say that knowing some of the stuff that we have coming in in Defiance County, and again, you have to take into consideration, things have slowed up, you know, you hope that what we have had, that, you know, behind the scenes, people are saying are going to, is going to happen, they don't pull out. But I think we could market and say, "Okay, who wants to come here?" And we start getting a list of people. I know when I talked to Mr. Countryman at Hicksville Schools, he, he told me regularly, he's got a list of people that want to know when houses are available. So I think we are, we just, we need to become more aggressive at our marketing to find out and get that list, because it's just like, it's just like a, a building that you have available. A lot of times, developers will tell me, "Well, if you can get it all filled for me, I'll, yeah, I'll do that in a heartbeat." I think we need to look at it the same way with a housing development. If we have a list of people that, yes, we want $250,000 home in Hicksville, we have that list, we've already, we've already done most of the work, we, we're proving the demand. So that's, I think we need to look at.
Sounds great.
I would also say if, we probably, just for, for direction for me and how to go the next steps, I laid out next steps in here, but I do think it would be beneficial if, you know, you guys had a couple of people on a committee where we could kind of meet and like try to start moving and driving this forward. So I'll wait to hear from you guys on the next steps, on, you know, everything I've shared, so I'm assuming you guys want to talk about it.
Would you work with other communities on these kind of projects? Do they have a, like another committee forum where you have some business, maybe some contractors, maybe in the community?
I would say.
They usually work with councils.
Yes and no. I think if it gets, the ones that I have worked with, the ones that have too big of a committee, they never work. So I would recommend just like a few people that can kind of like be your, your voice.
Makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
One more quick question, Erica. In your conversations with developers before, and like you showed them LeBar Drive, did you discuss the TIF?
Yes.
So in your opinion, is the TIF enough alone? Is the TIF alone enough to attract a developer, or do we need to look at basically utilizing the CIC at a low cost for land?
I think that you should look at that as well. But I, I thought you were going another direction as well. Like, do we look, need to look at something also on top of the TIF? That answer, I don't know.
Well, I guess what I was getting at is, we've discussed that, basically a dollar of land sale.
Yes.
But basically.
But you can, yes, you can utilize, you can utilize the CIC, let's say if you have a developer that you know is going to, like, they come in and like, "We're going to develop 56 homes." Oh wait, we're going to even do more than that, like they're going to find ground somewhere else. You could utilize the CIC as the pass-through to make sure that you, you get that identified developer and you don't have to do the bids.
Does the commissioners get involved in this TIF money? Task go through them first?
So how it usually works is the TIF, the way the commissioners work, I mean, we would, it was, it'd be just like the schools. I would make sure that the commissioners are on board, the schools on board before we even move forward. But as far as the TIF goes, I, it's just like an enterprise zone agreement or a CRA. I have to get approvals from all those different entities and put it in our packet that we sent in the state.
Okay, any other questions?
Good news, although the additions going there, and they've been working on it Sherwood at Point 27 there. Is that all, do they go this route as well?
I have met with the owners. They are really just doing like onesies and twosies, and it's more just like whenever they get interested. It's not like a full-on plan.
Well, most of their infrastructure was already in, the roads are paved and all the, everything underground was there.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But I know that they're looking at doing some of, they had reached out to do like a road, but I can't, we can't build a road, we can't tip a road if you're, for only one or two houses.
Right.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erica.
Okay, next on the agenda, Council Committee Reports Finance, met October 23rd, 24th, and November 2nd. We have the minutes. We'll talk about it any, or?
Again, we've, we're probably, I don't know, seven hours maybe. Going over all the line-by-line budgets from all the department heads, looking at the fire EMS levy that's going on for tomorrow to vote on. Also, for the pool, opening bid was last Thursday. Changed a lot of things, becomes the budget, so I don't know what's going to go on there. But a lot of them were over budget, let's say some of them, and we got to move some stuff around. We're going over all the wants and needs and wish lists, and pay raises and. So a lot of it's based off what happens tomorrow night, so.
Okay. Any questions for the finance committee? Personnel committee.
Kind of real quick, I guess, with finance, you and I were kind of talking a little bit before. And obviously it'll get a pool bid. Do we, because that, that contract is here. What is everybody's thought? I mean, I haven't seen the bids myself. Where are you guys at in terms of funding that?
I haven't actually seen bids individually. I haven't seen, I know approximately what they are. I haven't seen them. We have two bids. I just know the total, four point four, 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 five or something. I haven't seen them at all.
I only had one bid.
One bid.
Well, they had one, didn't they give one for the pool, one for the splash pad?
Oh, that.
Yes.
Yeah. One company.
All one contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, one contractor, but two bids.
Yes.
One company.
All one contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, one contractor, but two bids.
Was it three bids?
But did they bid this?
They never filled one, I'm pretty sure, total. Well, I mean, if you take bid one and bid two and you just add them up, they didn't actually give one, like, there's a price break if you get both of them or anything.
Okay. So in the scenario that the levy tomorrow doesn't pass, are we, because it's obviously, the legislation's there to approve this contract tonight. The levy doesn't pass tomorrow and we approve the contract, can we fund the EMS and pay the, pay for this project?
In my own opinion, I wouldn't pass it before the vote.
Exactly.
I agree with her.
Hundred percent.
I think we should have a special meeting after the levy so we can make a smart decision. As opposed to hoping it'll pass.
Splendid idea.
Then it doesn't, and then we're looking for money in all the darkest places. Talking about maybe two days at the most.
What's the timeline on how long that bid's good for?
Sixty days.
Sixty days?
We could have the first reading, right?
We could do the first deal. I mean, just do the first reading tonight.
Just undo an emergency.
Anyway, you necessarily have to have a special meeting and just, you know, whatever happens. And unless you're trying to discuss, I mean, if it's a matter of, let's say the opposite, say it passes, everybody's like, okay, we can afford this, then at the next meeting, we can just pass it and use the second.
Well, I guess that brings up the point that, so we can afford those. I mean, that's what we're saying.
Not what I'm saying.
Not without making a bunch of cuts in other places, in my opinion. I don't know where those cuts would be, because we've already trimmed the budget as much as we think we can. And if we have to come up with another almost three hundred thousand, you know, we gotta figure out where that's gonna come from.
So where do the numbers, I guess, where do the numbers come in for separate? So I, I've, the total's in here, but what's the splash pad versus the?
The splash pad was eight hundred and sixty thousand.
What's eight sixty-nine? Full came in at three point five.
There's a couple deducts in there.
Right.
One of them we wouldn't, the two alternates, both being deducts. One of them we would take, but the other one we wouldn't, which was the parking lot deduct. To not do the parking lot was, you know, drop the sixty-five thousand dollars. That sixty-five thousand dollars, in my opinion, we'd be crazy not to take that sixty-five thousand and have the parking lot done. I did do two other estimates. One was eighty-nine thousand and the other was eighty-one thousand. Do, you know, have another company come in and do that parking lot after the fact.
Ryan, did we surface that parking lot for eighty-nine? That sounds way too cheap.
The.
His assessment was two-ten.
Yeah.
The first bid was two-ten, that was a dig.
Yeah, that was on all.
Because they were, the assumption it was a stone parking lot and not already an asphalt parking lot. But the contractor, the GC's number, when it was broke down, sixty-five thousand dollars, is what it would come out to be to do that parking lot as part of this project.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the school agreed to?
Up to thirty percent.
Up to thirty percent of that?
Yes.
So is that taken into account when looking at that final cost?
That is the maximum amount that would cost us.
I've never seen a project get completed under, and that's been what I've said.
Is there an option, and obviously this is, which we can get into later, but since we're discussing committee. But, I mean, do we just renew a handful of CDs at a large dollar amount? Is there an option? I guess, what's the penalty in, say, to pull a portion of that out to contribute to this?
The CDs are.
If you look at your fund status report, all those percentages, the money that's invested is between all of those accounts. It's not specifically in the capital projects.
So some of them are water sewers, some of them are other.
So you have secured a loan for part of ours, correct?
No.
No?
I don't really have to talk to you about it. I'm securing anything.
Well, but they are willing to take us on. And how much interest are they going to?
Seven point six nine.
We're gonna be shopping around.
Seven point six nine for ten years?
We're gonna be shopping around.
We should let, we should let those guys go ahead with what they're doing. And we need, we need to slow down. We're just spending, paying too much money.
But that's, my other question was, I see we have a resolution on there for the, everything, you know. But I was, we bid them out two separate, one of the reasons I thought we bid them out separately was so whether or not the pool, like, it came in at two and a half, whatever. And if majority of council didn't say yes to the pool, we don't slow them down from keep moving forward was, I thought, the intent.
Yeah, that was, was.
So that's why I was kind of surprised why we have one resolution for both of them, instead of having two separate ones.
If I could add to that, I mean, with the bid request and proposal for the splash pad, the house, the, I mean, the pavilion, everything, I thought it was reasonable. Eight sixty, I thought it was actually gonna be more than that.
I thought.
To me, it's gonna be the, the pool's the high side. And then the pool operations after that point are all running high compared to what we're usually budgeting for a pool. You know, the lifeguards, the upkeep, everything else, part of that is budgeted numbers. If we look through finances, a huge increase of what we, of course, it's a bigger, better facility, you're gonna have higher increases. But it's something you definitely take a look at down the road. I mean, with this whole project, is the operational side of the pool.
Did you talk to anybody at table? Did you deal with Morgan?
I, I, no, I haven't spoke to him. Like, they haven't been awarded anything, so I haven't.
Right. I, there again, I'll say it one more time, we, we need to let this splash pad go on. And we need to stop, regroup. We can't pay almost eight percent interest. That's crazy, all that kind of money, especially.
Almost one million dollars in interest over ten years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, no, can't do it.
I don't think we should stop.
Not stop, just slow down, but regroup.
I don't want to slow them down at all.
No, no.
I mean, right now, there's, timing-wise, I mean, we, we are hoping we're gonna have a chance to get all this grant money. And either we're too late to apply because we're too far along, or we're not, we're applying too early. Or now we gotta wait till after the first year and there's matching funds available, but we can't award this bid now. And we gotta wait till after the first year to award it, which is good for sixty days, we'll be pushing it. But if we found out that we could get matching funds, we don't even have to take a loan out on it.
Well, I did talk to a couple of people about that, the capital projects grant. And they said the most they've ever, ever given out was a half million.
Half million, yeah, that's what.
Which is still.
I'm not saying that's, we'll take it, you know, if we can get that grant, that's great. But I think at one time we were thinking, we could possibly get more than that. I mean, if we can come up with cash for part of the project. But they said it's rare that any, I mean, it never, ever passed that kind of money.
I think when Greg shared us the grant application stuff, I think the, when they looked up some of the projects that they awarded, they were all pools and splash pads for the most part. And their, the maximum was five hundred thousand on those.
Which is still a nice gift, I mean, nice grant.
What are we gonna do?
I think we should schedule a special meeting for Wednesday evening.
Well, sure, might need time to find out loans from other places for the difference. I mean, eight percent's not, I mean, seven, seven point six nine percent. Find out what the payment's gonna be, because the monthly payment for ten years is, is a lot.
You know what the payment would be, don't you? You know what the payment would be, don't you? How much? Twenty seven thousand?
Twenty five thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars a month for ten years.
Twenty five?
Six seventy-five for total, three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars a year.
So we gotta give them a used Jeep every, every month.
So you wanna wait till after tomorrow night, then we'll regroup and go from there.
Have a special meeting. I think there was a lot of discussion on the table. I think we, a lot of people up there for some ideas and, um, let me discuss it.
Can they build a splash pad without?
Sure.
Isn't it?
That's why we broke it, that's why the bid was broken up the way it was.
They could put, use the building and then later.
It's all ice, it's all separate.
Okay.
So the building under the splash pad is completely separate from the building, that, that pool.
They, I mean, if Troy would rewrite this and narrow it down to just a splash pad, this, this could be, they could be on their way. And they would probably love to be.
I guess the big thing would be come in higher than what they had anticipated. I'm assuming too.
Well. I, I've worked with Morgan Montgomery at Nagels for years and years and years. I would, I could call it tomorrow and say, hey, you know, if we separate these things out, and we regroup, do a little regrouping on the, on the pool. Could those guys go ahead?
Because that's already, it's already separated.
Not in here.
It's not in there.
In their proposals.
I didn't even know what the numbers were.
The bid that was done by Sixmo was there were three separate bids they asked for, one for the pool, one for the splash pad, and one for the, combined, like, maybe if you got both, they were awarded both, they might get a discount. If they didn't show that.
Yeah, basically Nagels isn't gonna give you, given us a discount for the both.
No, I'm not looking for a discount. I'm just looking for them to.
They said it's already broken down.
What was their contingency with that splash pad number? Did they break that out?
I don't think so.
With the original, it was like ten to twenty percent contingency from the engineer's estimate, if I recall.
Engineers, yeah.
Ten before they pass the new law for twenty.
But it's where this number is seventeen percent over the engineer's estimate, which, I mean, still, we can still legally accept it.
Two, three weeks ago, we kind of accepted it.
Correct.
Did the engineer separately estimate the splash pad and the?
They did, yeah.
So that's why I'm saying this, so if you're gonna do it, except the splash pad only, you gotta make sure it's within twenty percent of whatever the engine. In other words, that it couldn't, they couldn't be way over on the splash pad and under on the other one, and it wouldn't balance out anymore.
If we, if we went that route, then it'd be way over.
The pool.
Or the splash pad.
Splash pad would.
Splash pad would be way over what?
At eight sixty here, eight sixty-nine, what was that, two hundred and, well, they had two hundred and fifty thousand with their. That was for the pad itself, but then the pump house and everything else could be on top of that, which I have to get all those numbers.
You'd have to make sure that that number that Nagel estimated was within twenty percent of the engineer's estimate. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, when they rewrote their estimate, they should have had.
We just went to bid at three point eight for the combined.
Engineer's estimate.
So when they, they didn't break out an engineer's estimate for each per, because we asked.
The original one, yes. We went to rebid, all we did was we changed some of the, we changed some of the specs of the pool house itself, fencing. And then we raised the engineer's total estimate of the front quarter. They didn't go back and change every line.
Make some adjustments for the.
So we essentially shot ourselves in the foot with what we were asking them to do.
Not really, that's just how we, how we do it.
Oh, you put out the bid and so we're bid, you can't accept it? I mean, what's your choice?
Well, no, what I'm saying, though, is that they didn't prepare a separate engineer's estimate and break that out separately. We can't.
So how do you compare it now to say it's within? It's within twenty percent?
I don't know.
Because all they provided was one engineer's estimate. So that's, we shot ourselves in the foot.
Talk to me, Ken. Me personally, you paid that company to waste your money by the way they rebid this. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead. Well, no, I can see. That's it. Hell, we all knew that. Well, then what are you debating? What I'm debating is I want them. Yeah. To take off and do their thing. And, and we'll keep stumbling along here. Well, but what you're stumbling through is gonna affect them. No, it's not. I think it will. Why? Because you think we're over? Because when they bid the second time around, they did not break down the splash pad separate.
Prepare a separate engineer's estimate.
They didn't. No, but you paid them to redo all this stuff and they did not do it.
Which we had already paid for once.
Yeah. Once for you and twice for us.
Yeah.
And they still don't have it right. Yeah.
Well, I think that our first one was very accurate, but it was just standalone.
Well, essentially, you're gonna be standalone now.
But we, we can't do the project. The village has to do the project.
Right.
Right, and, and, but there's no such a new waiting while we find out whether the EMT thing, whether the levy passed and, and how we're gonna appropriate.
But there was some shared plumbing and stuff like that between the two projects, correct?
They're separate, they're, they're all separate, that are.
I, I, my opinion, since everybody has one, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, you wait two more days to decide what you want to do. Yeah, I mean, if you totally are gonna kill the project after two days, then that gives us very, and, and you, and you approve going forward the splash pad. That gives us a clear answer. Two days is not gonna matter.
Well, the, the big thing, though, is if they didn't prepare a separate engineer's estimate for the splash pad alone, the village can't accept that bid. Because we don't have it, because they didn't prepare.
Nothing compared to.
They, they're, so we have to be within.
You don't think so? Yeah, somebody's gotta have an engineer estimate on it. I mean, the engineer.
It has to be recorded, though, doesn't it?
But it's supposed to, yeah, they have to have knowledge of what it.
It has to be advertised, right?
Right.
Almost in the bid document.
Yeah, it is, right there.
So, do you get what I'm saying, Greg? Because the Sixmo didn't break that out and advertise it that way, if we don't accept the pool and them to, and the splash pad together, we can't award the project, right?
We can't determine whether or not it's within twenty percent of the engineer's estimate if they didn't estimate that separately, which means we can't award the project.
But I'm sure that they didn't do that because we bid them separately. So they had to have an engineer's.
Well, they had to have been in the bid documents.
You've got bid documents.
About the office, I do.
What that's it.
We'll need to take a peek at them in the morning.
Yeah, I guess, do you, I mean, do you know that answer already?
Right, I don't.
If they prepared a separate engineer's estimate?
No, I don't.
That's a deal about the fourth sheet. Fourth sheet into it.
Okay, any other discussion?
If they did.
I'll come up, we can talk more. He's supposed to be.
I ain't talking to him.
I'll talk to him.
Probably, probably can, shouldn't.
Why?
Be, I, I don't know how.
Why don't we ask our legal counsel?
If they're the only.
They're the only bidder.
Can you have a conversation with them prior to a bid?
We haven't awarded anything to them.
You can have a conversation with them, but, I mean, it either is, or, I mean, it's either in there and we're within the, it's not like if we're in twenty-three percent, Ron can tell them, hey, can't you cut out? Whatever. No, at that point, it's just like it wasn't the first time, then we gotta, new estimate.
All I wanna know is where, where we are.
Um.
Greg's got something.
Can I just make a comment? If y'all decide that you can't, you're not gonna do the pool, can't do the pool, it'd be great if you could have a discussion about throwing a couple hundred grand towards a project, so it's even a better splash pad.
But if we, if it's bigger, then we're back to the drawing board of.
Re-bid, engineer.
Well, no, you can award it and go change orders.
Change order.
You gotta stay right in there.
Try to get it done.
There you go. Okay, we know what we're gonna do?
Well, if we're gonna meet in a couple, by Wednesday, you guys are gonna have.
Barry, you gotta know enough by Wednesday, I mean, you might not even know the results of the election.
I have to Wednesday, if it's close.
Usually by the, by the election, even because it's so small.
Usually, yeah.
Could be really close too. It's close and there might be a recount.
But for now, we should have something on the books that we're planning on meeting Wednesday night, no? Don't you think it'd be smart to?
Oh, definitely.
Is that a motion?
I'm, well, I can, I'd like to make the motion.
Maybe like Thursday.
Hold a special meeting Wednesday evening, that whatever you got, time you guys are available.
You need me to do that?
Probably smart.
Can you do Thursday unavailable?
I can do Thursday.
There we go.
I can do Thursday.
Thursday?
All we had is that Chicago Bears Thursday.
Well, long, just up north.
I can figure it.
So what time Thursday?
They might actually win that one.
Six o'clock, five o'clock. Let's set it for five, Thursday.
Is that something published in the tent?
Yes.
Yeah, it's an open meeting, right?
Yeah, it's an open meeting, right?
Yeah, just right.
Thursday, yes.
Five o'clock.
Thursday either.
Okay, so we got two councilmen that can't be there.
I can't be there Thursday.
Then what's wrong with Wednesday?
I guess I'm questioning why it's gotta happen-
How about next week?
Two days, like, right after the election.
It doesn't happen on the next one.
Oh, no, that's way too long.
First part of next week?
Next Monday? Everybody gonna be home Monday? Let's do Monday. Monday the twenty-seventh.
Whoa, how sweet, whoa.
Today's only the sixth.
Fourteen.
Thirteenth.
Fourteen. She, she was leading me in numbers. Monday the who?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, next Monday.
At five.
At five.
Okay.
Everybody can be here? I'll line a sitter up.
Well, that's my aunt's birthday, I thought.
Is that right with you guys?
We're here along with the pink.
It is what it is, Ron.
Okay.
We're not gonna change, we're not gonna be able to change that.
Okay, move along.
Personnel, what all the people who donate a pile of money are trying to have us accomplish, so.
Yes, yes, and we gotta get something going so that the people are, are sure and happy.
Personnel.
We met, uh, last Thursday at five p.m. Did everybody get chance to read through the minutes? I know they were kind of long, but we talked about a lot of stuff. Does anybody have a question? Thank you. Personnel, did you get a chance to read over personnel? Uh, you have any questions regarding what we talked about? All the time, you can't remember what you did.
What's your question?
Do you have any questions?
Not questions, no, opinions, but it's too soon, I bet. You guys still have a lot of work to do yet, right?
Yes, yes, we got a lot of things to talk about, so.
Okay. But you were visiting.
Administrator's report. Don't really have much. My big thing was the pool. You guys probably also, North Main Street was paved. Tomorrow will be in to, uh, insert the new valves for the water tower. They won't be, they won't be tapping it yet, but we'll be setting the, the valves for the tower.
Refresh me, what valves doing what?
Shut off valves.
I thought Langway put those in.
The water tower.
Tower, no.
Not well. New water tower. Langway's had nothing in on this one.
Who run the, who run the, the pipe to it? The supply line to it?
There's already a main out there next to it.
And it's already tied in?
I have.
Oh, that's, I thought it was.
That's all I got. Any questions for Cory? Solicitor's report. Troy?
First thing I have is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, first reading by caption only, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees. Next time for sure. Uh, next is a second reading, a resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Home and Burnt Excavating LLC for water main replacement at Cornet and Rock Street in Hicksville, Ohio, and declare an emergency. Any particular reason not to an emergency?
We only got sixty days for the, for the key to their numbers, and if we go three readings, we'll be on that, as well, a thirty day wait period.
Okay, all right.
Make much of this under rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Far?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
So the third reading, a resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Home and Burnt Excavating LLC for water main replacement at Cornet and Rock Street in Hicksville, Ohio, and declare an emergency.
It's a move.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
And then the next thing, we just talked about on the pool, but I get, it's on there so we can read it, and I guess if there's no discussion after, we need to just treat it as a first reading or somebody can move that table. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, a first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Vernon Nagle Inc. for construction of the pool, splash pad, pool house, and pump house in Hicksville, Ohio, and declare an emergency.
Move your table.
Second.
We're just gonna have just the first reading.
Yeah, if we just have the first reading and don't slow anything down, we can table it at the second.
Let it go through the process.
Just in case we come into a time crunch. Well, even if it comes to a time crunch, can we just pass it as an emergency, as time? As long as everybody votes to approve it.
Just suspend the rules and everything?
Right. That's all you can do, advise everything as an emergency, not everything.
Okay, so just the first reading, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, last is resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven by caption only, resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to hire Rachel Hammersmith as the village solicitor for the village. First reading, no word.
No word. No emergency? I think that was an emergency. Haver sent me over here, sent me, sent me here fifteen years ago, and now, now they're probably gonna move me over there.
Well, just 'cause you calmed down and you kept in line.
Oh, geez.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Any other questions for the solicitor? Okay, department has police chief.
So y'all should have received, uh, the monthly stats, stats for October. Uh, and then my administrative clerk, Julie, is retiring as of December first. So we have, uh, we're taking, we had advertised applications and resumes until today for today by four o'clock. We had about fourteen or fifteen, I haven't checked since I left the office today to see if any more came in. Uh, I've already started scheduling interviews, so starting tomorrow with one for sure, so. And we got, there's some pretty good applicants, at least looking on paper and stuff.
Good, that's good. How many years has Julie been working for the police departments?
Four years. Oh, geez.
I would say she's, she dedicated staff for, for the police department, the village.
No, I mean-
Very good at her job.
Yeah, she was, it used to be in that window.
We all miss her, she did a great job, so.
She'll be hard, her shoes will be hard to fill, that's for sure. Other than that, I think that's- Any questions for the chief and the council? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Fire EMS Bruce?
I have nothing, mayor.
Park director?
I do. I see some park park. I wanted to thank the Halloween committee, they had nice, brought the kind of back this year, they did a great job on people, kids had a great time.
I'll tell Abby that.
And then you got a party coming up too here, what, Saturday?
A week from Saturday.
Yep, feather bingo.
Yeah, feather bingo. I guess I did have something.
There you go, you wanna? I was waiting.
Cause he gonna tell, tell people to get out and vote tomorrow?
Yes, get out and vote.
I mean, it was a tragic fire you had today, but I listened to all your traffic on my radio and, and, uh, you guys did an excellent job, excellent.
Thank you.
You and all the departments, y'all worked together like one big team and did a great job.
Thank you.
Feather bingo's this Saturday at the fire hall, right?
We, I believe so.
What, it's the eleventh?
Eleven.
Is this coming Saturday?
Yeah.
Am I right? I always ask, what is feather bingo?
What is feather bingo?
Yeah.
You win a, it's regular bingo.
Okay.
And wherever they put them, if you bingo and it's, uh, get a turkey or a ham.
Or door prizes, they have a good, you get a lot of stuff.
Where's the feather come in at?
That's what I was saying.
From the turkeys.
It's a live turkey, you know, it's not frozen, you get a live one, you can do the rest yourself.
You get a little live pig, too?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good time.
A lot of people come to that.
Yes.
It's open to the public, we encourage people, they got a lot of food, um, door prizes.
Do you have to, like, register to go or?
Nope, just show up.
Yep, just show up, buy a card or two or three.
I don't remember the times of it.
Bring a little pig and, and let go.
Sure.
Is that on your lap?
Open the doors at four.
Park director, anything?
Nothing much down there, we're finishing up our last week down there this season.
Pretty good year for the park. Any questions for Val and Gary?
Thank you.
Was this your last season?
One more?
It's what we said last year.
They're on the encore tour.
Okay, fiscal officer Cheryl?
I have fund status and cash summary for the year, October income tax, utility, mayor's court report, second quarter media account franchise fee report, and somehow I missed giving you September revolving loan, so now you have September and October. And there's also notes from NOPAK about, um, grant money that I put in there.
Do you know what that can be used for?
Nothing we need it for. It's, um, for any kind of program or services that reduce poverty. Provide resources and services to support families in your community.
So like housing vouchers or something like that?
Something like that, yeah, the community service center out at PD.
Do you know, can those be used for, I mean, working with mommy valley and like housing vouchers and that sort of thing?
That, I don't know.
Do you know, Eric?
I'm not certain on that.
Well, birds is coming tomorrow at nine, signs some papers, so I can ask you.
Cheryl, the American Rescue Act dollars, can you refresh my memory what that is, what the, what those are sitting there?
That was the one million for the well field and then seven hundred and ninety-four thousand for the water tower.
So we're, I guess, is, don't we need to reallocate those back into their correct funds?
I'm waiting for them to finish shut billing me so I can get the rest of the funds. We have all except seven hundred, actually seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars of the million dollars we've been reimbursed and about eighty thousand of the seven hundred and ninety-four. And as soon as, uh, all the money's in, then it'll be to the right place.
Okay.
We'll, we'll say on, uh, we did look up the value for the, the bid that they posted for November first opening. The engineer's estimate was three point eight million and phase one, the pool, pool house was through two point nine five, and phase two, the splash pad, splash pad pump house stuff's eight hundred and fifty thousand, so.
So that should be, but that's-
Yeah, like two point two percent.
Yeah.
Super.
Mark, I got a question for you, um, how's this tower coming?
It's up, it's, the, the buildings are all there, wiring is all there, I think they just got some little things to do. Uh, they just sent us the contract about two weeks ago, contract is currently being reviewed by prosecutor's office. Uh, I believe once they sign the contract is when they can turn the top-
It'll go online as soon as it's signed.
Yep, so, I don't know, the little things that they need to finish is gonna interrupt, you know, from not going online, but, uh, but, you know, cement pads, the building's generator, everything is all there and so.
I'm encouraged by the income tax being up thirteen percent this year from last year, so that's, that's good news. Any questions for Cheryl? Okay, my report, tomorrow's voting day, a big day for the school, the city, nine one one, and issue one and two for Ohio, so I encourage people, if, if you haven't voted, from six thirty in the morning till seven thirty at night, Empower Church at ninety-two twenty-eight Hicksville Edgerton Road, so I encourage people that haven't voted to go out and vote. Veteran's Day is this Saturday, uh, the eleventh, thanks to our veterans that we have a free country, great country, great town, thank, thank a veteran. That's all I have.
They do have a Veteran's Day program out at the school for, in case anyone didn't know about it, uh, probably still not too late to contact elementary office and get your name on the list if you're interested in being out there in the morning, I believe it starts at eight thirty, normally lasts about an hour, so.
About some Friday?
Friday, yeah.
I just got two things. First off, um, just for the trail association, wanted to thank the beautification committee, they donated three thousand dollars and the association was able to buy twenty-six trees, get those planted around the trail. And then the community Thanksgiving out at gathering place is happening again, uh, it'll be Thursday, the Thanksgiving Day, for the eleven to one, um, I think this is our fifth.
Sixth year?
I don't recall which, but, um, it's happening again, so. Open to all, and we do have takeout and, um, or you can come and sit and have a meal with community members, so encourage anybody to stop out.
So just dumb question, but I'm assuming somebody before they planned on checking to make sure they weren't going the wrong spot or anything?
Yep, it's within the fifteen feet.
So the next meeting will be the thirteenth at five? Be a big meeting? To make a decision, so, uh, that's all I have. Make much to adjourn? Second? Second, roll call. Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
He did the turn.